Off because of your recession was taking full course. We never did any projects that again until 2014. We started the pavement management plan in 2013 of how to manage the pavement in our city. At the same time, when that got finished, we did the water and sewer and street project of White Rose Franklin Wildflower area in 2014. And at that same time in 2014, the city council wanted then was we were trying to work at getting a five-year CIP for streets, water and sewer. But like I was telling Zach, I said, a lot of things from 2014 on, we had to change the assessment policy in 2014 because we were a hundred percent assessment policy yet in 2013. Change the assessment policy. Well, we changed it again in 2019 for the North Forest View projects going forward. So it's changed again. So there's been a problem with auto assess. We've had the roller coaster ride of the economy, inflation, COVID. There's just so many factors that we've never been able to complete the five-year CIP for water and sewer. So we are here tonight again asking for trying to get consensus for 2024, but also coming with a preliminary look at the five-year CIP that hopefully we can get in place for the next budget cycle for 2024. That we get a five-year CIP that's it's up, you're still going to move things around on it. It's not going to be solid. You're going to look at it every year. You're going to add the fifth year in each year, and then you're going to look at the project, and look at the financial stability of the city, look at assessment policies. It all needs to be reviewed probably on an annual basis. So it's, it's not like it's guaranteed that things will happen, but it helps. Zach's next question was, how does it help staff? And I said, well, for me, it really helps for federal funding for streets. The federal funding for streets is five years out. When we're applying right now, we would apply for a federal grant this year that was for 2027 and 2028, depending on which type of project you applied for. So it does help us for getting funding and looking at things going forward, but without a plan, we don't know for sure what a qual, which projects will qualify into that overall scope. Having a five-year CIP, I think, is really good for the city, and it helps with the, with being open to the citizens of what's coming at, you know, in the neighborhoods and stuff. Because that was one thing that the city council back in the day 2000, you know, this is our, this is our goal. That, well, doesn't mean we're going to necessarily make it because when the map was pulled, it had already been stretched out to 13 years versus the original 10 years. Well, I knew probably in oh four, oh five, somewhere in there, that 10 years wasn't going to do it anymore because things had changed. One thing that changed, wouldn't clear water road project. So that's how things change as policies change, you know, the city financial. I kind of told Zach that background because, and he was very thankful, and he said it helps him understand the bigger, the bigger picture and why. So we're here tonight because I've, I've laid out, I've actually laid out 10 years because that's what it takes for the water and sewer roughly. I've got a 10-year layout in the spreadsheet, but the main one is headed to South, the South Forest View project. And it's not just because of the water and sewer. It's also because that's the lowest rated streets in our entire system. One of the problems we have is that where the water and sewer hasn't gotten, that's where, so we had to make an assumption. Now, will this change if the micro-surfacing is successful? Yes. Because one thing that like I
I also want Trevor to be at the microphone.
Oh, it's not about her, it's about us.
No, it's for recording purposes.
Is that, is that Meredith Norway area to the west here is where we micro-surfaced last year? That's when the 25 years is, it was done in 2003. But the micro-surfacing is successful, that's one thing that could move on this map. We're not going to know, we knew going in about the fourth year of the chip ceiling, that chip ceiling wasn't worked. Took about three to four years before it showed up whether it's successful or unsuccessful. This is only the third year of micro-surfacing that the city has done. So I think my, micro-surfacing is working for the city. So just kind of giving you a general outline of the projects for 2024, but also showing you that we've projected out five-year, but we've also projected out in the spreadsheet that I have there, 10 years because it takes 10 years roughly to get the water and sewer and the streets done in all those five neighborhoods. We kind of had said that back in 2019 that we can only do probably a big water and sewer project every other year. We did North Forest View in 2020. We had kind of warned them that we were coming in 2022. Now it's from that area, asking, oh, is it coming? Is it coming? You said it was going to be such and such. And I said, we're working on it. I said, the can be developed with the, with the apartment buildings. And then so brings the roundabout and Cypress Drive connection from 48 to College Road to the fourth, they can be moved around. The other one that, there's, there's two, three of them in here that are really more developer-driven and it depends on if the development happens or not. So you try to balance between the development-driven projects, our pavement management, and our water and sewer extensions in the, in these five neighborhoods that are left around the city. So it's kind of a balancing act to try to make it all for the water and sewer. That, that was always promoted out there, on the map, in all the documents. I think it needs to be added, but you know, streets. So I think the statement needs to be updated and put in there, you know, pavement management, you know, how was pavement management we implemented starting in 2013? We've been doing Pacer ratings of the streets every three years. We did a Pacer rating last year in 2022. The average has come up a little bit over the 10 years. It started down in the low 6.2, 6.3, I think is what's in the pack. That a goal in that pavement management plan, that we said that we had to be at this? It was just kind of a target that staff's been using that, that most cities try to strive to have between a seven and an eight on an average citywide. But there's no set definite goal by the go, you know? Has to do with policies and goals ultimately that the city council can choose because we even water and sewer is, is assessments. All these streets, FDRs and Millen overlay is assessments. Going forward, are policies going to have to change?
Proposing in the CIP, knowing that we're going to have to talk about policies and things of nature as we get into the depths of the conversation tonight's meant to be an introductory of that with some questions that we'd like to have answers to related to the 24 plan. So Trevor, if you, if you
If you want me to go in depth of every one. The one up here on 77 is an extension for the Bob Sullivan possible development, and it's only water and sewer. Edgewood Drive and Delwood and Nabatney are commercial streets, FDRs.
And we're just looking at purple ones.
All of purple is, is proposed for 2024. Cottage Grove neighborhood is, is FDR or Millen overlay, depending on what we find when we do soil borers and, and take cores of the pavement. A lot of these are either FDR or Millen overlay, depending on what we find when we go. After we could be reminded is that pavement actually fails from the bottom. So everything in purple, pretty much in these areas are all Millen overlay or FDR. We got Universal, which is almost a full reconstruction, but that's got to do with that storm sewer pipe. We delayed it this year because we're trying to get the funding from MINDOT, and that has found. Commercial down here is FDR, little bit of commercial here. No, this is residential, sorry. This is the residential in between where we left off on Glory Road and Homestead, a short 2021, because it had some residential homes on it, we decided in 2021, we were only going to do the commercial FDRs and we pushed the residential. Then the big one is South Forest View for streets, water and sewer. And that's really it. Then a lot of it is finishing this year's 2023, you know, into city, not driven, why can't I think of the word? City project, you know, scheduled. Showed 23 and 24, but then it shows 25, 26, 27 and 28 possibility. So I'm open for any questions, I guess.
These projects were, are being proposed by you and your staff based upon the pavement management plan and trying to maintain and in reference to the memo that you've submitted to me is that that's trying to maintain.
High sixes on this plan. I don't know if it'll push it into the sevens or not. Might push it into low sevens. We didn't, we didn't take and project it out.
I don't know how to ask, ask this, per se, to get two roads very similar, just flop those around or set that one aside for another year or will that save anything?
Very, it shouldn't have the same Pacer rating. If it's been used more, you know, there's, there's been more traffic on it, should have a higher Pacer rating. And that goes back to, these are Pacer ratings of, of four and fives. And 25 years old, residential and 20-year-old in
Commercial.
If you only want to do Pacer ratings of four or less in residential, yes, then that would change this map. Right now, we've been following that four and five is Millen overlay. Because if you go too far, then for sure, you're going to push them all to FDR. You go, if they start hitting two, a three and a four, then you're probably hitting the FDR versus the Millen overlay.
But in the context, this is meant to be a living, breathing document. Some roads will deteriorate faster than others based on usage or not. There might be roads that have similar usage, but for one reason or another may have seen cracks or things like that, and that deteriorates faster than adjacent road residential. Being that this is a living, breathing document and intended to be reviewed annually, it allows for the city to shift projects around. You might have a road that has a bad freeze thaw cycle that dropped its rating one or two points that may have pushed it ahead of something else. It's always a moving puzzle, but really trying to hone in in the last, you know, the first two years as to projects that are going to happen or can move around. Hopefully that answers your question there.
Well, I, the answer, I guess, if the, if the same road had once been used more, it would be, show up in the bad Pacer rating.
It should show. A good example I can use, Darryl, is Oakwood versus Cedar Scening. Cedar Scening is threes and fours, and Oakwood was a five in this year's project. And then you heard from those people, they go, why don't you wait till the rest of the houses are built because it's not as in bad a shape as Cedar Scening? There's a good example, if we change that, we don't, that we'll just go to FDRs, you know, for sure, then why not let the Pacer ratings go to four or three? You know, why do it when the Pacer rating is at five, even though the pavement life is 25 years? Push it to somewhere between 25 or 30 years. But I had to start somewhere, that's the Or do you take and do the feasibility studies, bring the neighborhoods in and see what they have, you know?
Much more expensive than the FDR, I suppose.
Double, I think. I think it's double.
Just not necessarily a question, but it's kind of a comment about this I have on the record so that people could look and say, well, in 2024, I can expect an assessment with at least the way the policies stand now. So I think getting this done is something we need, we need to have, so it's not
Not rude by the city council. This is strictly city staff coming forward with a recommendation to start talking about the five-year CIP. So it's only coming from staff at this point.
And we had, like I said, we had a map on them, covered the windows back there so people could walk in. And this was shown, people would come there before it happened. And so it served two purposes, you know, like Darryl said, you know, we had to pull it down because they were holding us accountable to that map. But it was, to your point, it's a very effective tool to
They were just trying to get consensus so we can get started. We're kind of, we've been starting to put schedules together for 2024. And way back when, we put, few years when Brad first was hired, we put together, you know, that schedule, it needs to be about 18 months in advance. So we're pushing that to pull off 2024 projects, that 18-month period. So we, like tonight, what we're asking for is just 2024 projects. Go ahead with the feasibility studies. Maybe we get into the feasibility studies and that's where we start changing policy. We start moving things around on some of this, mainly the Millen overlay and the FDR. You know, if we're finding that these roads need an FDR anyway because of the core samples, then maybe we push them to 30 years, let them go down to a three, you know, push them a few more years.
So any of these 24 projects benefit from the micro-surfacing?
No. None of these were, none of these, the only two that have been done
Oh, I'm not talking about ones that have been done, I'm talking about, we don't have us, we don't have the answer yet about micro-surfacing, if it's going to extend the pavement life.
Correct. They won't, none of these will benefit because they won't get micro-surfaced, you know? They're too far, they are too far gone to micro-surface. You don't micro-surface anything under a six. So like last year, Meredith and Norway were sixes, pretty much that entire neighborhood, they weren't two or five, yeah. The other thing is, is if we can keep up, if we were supposed to go sit in the plan, we're calling for a seven-year rotation on the micro-surfacing. And we don't know if we can keep that up because of last year, you know, the bids were so, the cost went up
Right.
So much that I don't know if we can keep on the seven-year plan, we may have
Well, yeah, I'm sure people will be asking that because we've been promoting
Yep. I think by next year, we're going to know, I think that'll give us three seasons that Inglewood and Clearwater have lived through, and both of those were 2004 projects where they've had, it's in such rough shape. And that was done in 2004 as well. So if that holds up, you know, and we get 20, 25 years out of more of a commercial roadway, collector roadway, neighborhood occasions right now, it looks good, but we're not down to the freeze thaw cycle of this year yet. Usually don't know how well held up there till June or July, once everything is settled out, back to normal.
Any questions from council on the proposed improvements? Have Trevor turn the conversation towards my head, Joe? Jerry, can you?
Thank you. Your honor, council, as part of this, I made it better. So in closing your packet, it kind of showed a more of a summary, kind of more macro look at, a higher level look at whether, whether it's a street improvement, a water sewer, sanitary sewer, excuse me, or stormwater trails and the other various city assets. And then just how those, those funding sources will pay for those various improvements, including special assessments, a property tax levy for particularly for street improvements, some of the maintenance improvements we tend to, now a pavement management plan. In addition to that, utilize a little option sales tax that has some restrictions on the capital improvement nature of those projects, so we can use those for sanitary sewer, stormwater water, as well as traffic safety improvements for these various projects. We utilize our collective street fund, which we levy for, and the goal of that certainly was to try to get away from some of the debt service to shave off part of the debt service requirements each year by having cash on hand and be able to pay for part of those projects to lower the debt on our overall balance sheet. But it's also still a city funding source that's paying for, for some of those street costs. In addition to that, more recently, we've seen a little bit more global, you know, to be near governmental revenues, so whether that's federal grants, Fort Worth project and Inglewood project this year, that's carried for last year, or municipal state aid through the gas tax, our allocation that we received from MINDOT, as well as particularly in 2023, Cypress project, there's funding from Corwin County for its share of the roundabout and counter room forums, graphs and Just backing up real quick, so the 2023 projects, you know, we have programmed into the funding sources based on what we know now. So again, some of that's more pre-estimated, pre-bid estimates from our engineers, as well as actual projects that have since been bid. We talked a little bit earlier about this is fluid, just as an example, in the Cypress project now that we've bid it, the overall cost is about $900,000, only originally estimated that. So we did go back and kind of look at the various funding sources for that. Part of that is Corwin County's share, which if you look for $1,000,000 or that they're paying. In addition to that, some increasing that for assessments, maybe a portion of that, including new government revenue revenues, which is primarily the county's share, as I mentioned, of the Carter 48 Roundabout project. Now, we are required to have water sewers, stormwater fund, municipal state aid allocated about $1.1 million, about $1.9 million on budget street fund to elevation. That compares, looking at 2024's property tax levy, about $1.4 million, that's taxed about $3 million, primarily that's paying for significant amount of the water sewer structure related to the South Forest View project area. And about $1.2 million budget street funds elevated towards those project costs. The financing include the city's share of the project costs and debt service levy, as well as the special assessments that are financed until they're paid at an annual basis. So for 2023, that bond issue will be about $6.7 million. And then again, for 2024, we'd have about a $7.7 million dollar project, obviously not issued, just based on those project costs that are financed by the city. For 2023, just looking at an annual debt service payment that's fixed at a, at a level amount, if you want $150,000 a year over a 12-year period, then we'd have to layer it in obviously each year. And that's where it gets a little bit challenging, looking at those O-years as we continue to layer those in each year of that, of those payments for 2024. 2023 and 2024 currently work within our structure. I'm kind of looking a little bit further at the future years as we start to layer in the next four years of the capital improvement plan. Currently, right now, it does add about $600,000 to the debt service levy, so there's a little bit of a jump, or significant jump, I should say, in that from our current $76,000 levy. So that's something I'm going to try to massage a little bit too, to see if we can have your structure a little As I mentioned, one of the other funding sources is the sales tax. Currently, that does work through 2027, so it's about $7 million, $40 million remaining. So that's something we'll be working on, I guess, as we go forward in the future as well. But as I mentioned, there's a number of funding sources and cash flows that we do update as part of this, including the collective street fund, one, and then the individual water sewer and stormwater funds that you see as part of the enterprise funds, budgets that we put together each year. So when our indications look like it does work with water and sewer, it's a little bit more of a challenger, revenues are certainly a issue there either. So that's something we'll have to look at a little bit closer for those stormwater contributions and stormwater approvals that are being proposed for the, for the following four years. So just to recap, I guess, you know, the next couple, couple months as we work through the, those figures and getting updated figures, I guess, as we're closing out the financial statements for 2022, anticipation of Other specific questions, I guess, that can answer right now, some adjustments that we'll probably have to look at through policies and stuff too when it comes to special assessments and some of the funding sources, I guess. What was, does this project cost have certainly been higher than what the I guess it's a normal rate of inflation, inflation hasn't been
Probably is.
Not yet, just kind of real
Still, still pumping up the ball.
Yeah, I don't know that there's any perfect answer because I know a lot of this stuff, you know, it's just going out to this More discussion.
These challenges?
When was the last time that the city was just, yeah, without really financial challenges? Just a little bit, a hundred years ago?
When was that?
Yeah, it's, I mean, do you recall a year when
I, I would, I was in every six months, the assessments were really not even talked about because they really did, they did increase the values and stuff. It's this last, this last bit, it's been, I don't think we've seen that before. Values are up, but yeah, the assessments are up.
It was easier in 2007 or 2008 then?
2000s was a lot of developers coming in, making cash at the end of the project. I mean, I can name a lot of them. Otherwise, there was no way. We did 38, selling the lots, we were doing 100 homes a year in residential. Five years in a row back then, we did 500 homes.
What year was that?
About that, 2002 through 2006.
Centers was built in?
Yeah. It was just really taken off when I started here in 1999. That Inglewood job along opened up six different developments along, along the roads, six. It was big, opening up, extending that water and sewer, opening up all the developments. And where Darryl's at in South Dale, all that was because we extended water and sewer to develop.
So as you can see, you know, it's not, some of that wave the magic wand do, there's a lot of intricate variables and intricacies that go into creating a five-year CIP, but I wanted to use this time to, we're pretty confident with the projects that are on the slate for 23 and must be proposed for 24, that we're, be able to be within the thresholds of the debt service levy and things of that nature, that the council has an unwritten rule on of not having a half, one, half or enter. There's, there's issues that we have between now and July are going to lead us to putting together a, a five-year CIP for your formal consideration. Like to, to schedule so we can, work session or have it part of a work session or have it as a separate meeting to our capital improvements over the next several months, so that we can put this picture together. With that being said, the only thing trying to keep up with With that being said, the only thing trying to keep up with potential twenty-four in contact and with the engineering firms, the council pulled the trigger on the five-year CIP in July. So. Is there a preference of the council as to do it in the work session prior to a meeting? Or should we schedule a meeting that's on, on a separate date that slowly focuses on, you know, a ninety-minute meeting that slowly focuses on the topic idea? I, I'd look for the council person to run it one time.
Ju- just for the sub?
Just for the sub here. Work session, you know, we typically don't start before five-thirty, so that's ninety minutes. However, I don't know what, or none of the staff know right now what would come up or would necessitate even item on a work session. And I don't want those things to arise where we're talking about other things and not.
I have a moment to either.
Um, as it relates to the, to the slate of twenty-four projects that are being proposed, do we have a consensus that staff can proceed to?
Sure. We're all speaking.
We run this through utilities?
I think so, I think it should be. We didn't have, we.
Yeah.
I took it through last year, but then we didn't get any further with it. I have not taken this yet, and I wanted to see what, where the, is the council headed with it? If this is where you're heading, it will be on the next Utilities Commission meeting for March.
But the listed projects haven't changed from when you presented it to Utilities Commission?
No, one of them that really threw a loop in is, is pushing Cypress and Forty-Eight Roundabout to the top. We had to push some things around.
So just so I'm clear, Brad, about, uh.
The.
The five-year?
It's in regards to the five years.
It's twenty.
I didn't draw a picture of it and we need to revise policies, our revenue sources, things of that nature, so we can present a, a five-year plan come July. Cause obviously our conversations related to the pavement management plan, policy that the city has adopted. Uh, as Trevor indicated, we've got, as a staff, need the time to be able to, to twenty-eight or twenty-nine. Our policies are what would be admitted so that we can't hit those, those objectives in those policies. I, I believe that everyone said is that either is acceptable.
Okay.
And in that kind of sense, we'll, we'll, we'll. We'll maintain an eye on the work sessions and when we start seeing things, we'll, we'll start looking at scheduling.
Okay, I'd like for a motion to adjourn. Motion, man.
Sure. Second.
Second, make your ass all paper.
Aye.
Same sign. Yes, you better, it's a kid about us.
How's your view there?
Good.